Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Sacramento Council Meeting. And I'd like the city clerk to please call the roll.
Okay, so we'll start with Member Ashby.
Here.
Warren. Harris.
Here.
Chenere.
Here.
Guera.
Here.
Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg. And our Vice Mayor Jennings.
Here.
We do have a quorum. This meeting is broadcast live this evening, and there's a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker slips are located in the back of the room. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it into the assistant clerk at the front. And we also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need them. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll do our pledge of allegiance, and it is my honor to call up a young man who has been with the city for a number of years. He's from the City of Sacramento Parks and Recreations. His name is Gary Hayden. I'd like to bring him up to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Come on up, Gary.
Thank you. I think you need to check your definition of "young." Oh. All right. Here we go. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Gary, since you have the microphone, are there any words of wisdom that you'd like to give us before you leave?
My primary approach to life and management is only make new mistakes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you again, Gary. Appreciate that so much. Okay. Do we have anything to report out from closed session, city attorney?
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, we have nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you very much. With that, we will now move to the public comments, matters that are not on our agenda. We have moved that to the front of our agenda, and we are happy to have how many speakers that would like to speak today?
We have four.
Exact. Exciting.
Okay. So, we will start with Joan Louis Kennard. We have Sharon, I'm not sure if this is Bridgewich, Eric Frame, Richard Wake, and then one that just arrived, Frank Topping. So is Joan here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody, Vice Mayor, council members, and everyone. Again, God put President Trump in the position he is in now. Please, people of the United States of America, don't go shooting him, President Trump, and his cabinet members, the Republican Party. We know President Trump made some mistakes, I assume more. Some of the Republican Party don't agree with the President. Rather, most of the United States of America are talking behind his back in the news and late-night TV and are taking account of the mistakes he has made embarrassing the United States of America. I know everyone, or we know, he's a rich man with money. Action, his actions, President Trump aren't likable, but we need to respect his position and not shoot him or his cabinet members, not just vote for President Trump the next time. The word wicked came out of my mouth as my family and I talked about President Trump. The wall between Mexico and the United States of America, to me, is wicked and shameful. Neighbors being neighbors, I don't blame the Mexican President for not paying for that stupid, wicked, shameful wall between neighbors. God bless the United States of America and the world. Maybe a Sikh, Muslim, Mormon, Mexican might become the next President in the near future and can do better. You never know. I'm sorry I missed the gay parade. My boyfriend and I and his daughter are enjoying the 1,000-daughter-a-month one-bedroom apartment. Too much money. Rent control.
Thank you so much.
Sharon?
Hello. I am Sharon Obrigewicz.
Thank you.
A recent survey shows that only 4% think sports venues are important. 54% say parks and trails are more important to them. In the meantime, Golden One Center has been given a $255 million public subsidy. That is welfare for the rich. This is right-wing socialism. If that amount of money were spent on the homeless, the problem would be solved. At the rate rents are going up, it is time to start implementing rent control. That would stop some from becoming homeless. Now, a developer, John Saka, wants help to build a blighted block. You have been waiting for a decade for him to do something about it. His property should be condemned and turned into low-cost housing, or the developer should be required to provide low-cost housing commensurate with any help you give him. The council needs to get proactive on the issue of homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric?
Hello.
Good evening, Eric.
Thanks. So, I was doing some research. The FBI called Sacramento a hub of human and child trafficking. KCRA III called Sacramento a hotspot for child prostitution. KCRA III also reported that Sacramento is the second-largest human-trafficking city in the USA. These are bad stats. So, the California Department of Justice says 85,000 children go missing in California every year. That number hasn't changed for the last five years, so I'm wondering if we can get on that to combat this child trafficking epidemic that's going on in Sacramento. It's the hub. It's the second-largest human-trafficking city in the USA. So, meanwhile, our cops are busy harassing the homeless. I would like them to get on board and maybe investigate the child trafficking going on in Sacramento. To cops in the room, I implore you to investigate the child trafficking going on. It might be your chief or supervisor involved, so be careful. I'm wondering why child trafficking is an issue that's swept under the rug over and over and over again in this city. I was at the Board of Supervisors, informed them of these issues as well. They gave a whole budget, and their budget dedicated, they didn't even have a specific number, actually, but it was roughly under 100,000 dedicated to human trafficking. That's a measly amount. So, given that Sacramento is the hub of child trafficking and the second-largest human-trafficking city in the U.S., I think we should talk about it, at least, because, you know, the children are dying and suffering and being raped and all the horrible things you can think of. So, you know, let's look into that, investigate it a little bit.
Eric.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
So, has Richard arrived? Is Richard here? Okay, Frank Topping?
Evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'd like to call attention to the letter in 2011 that the UN Special Repertoire for Clean Fresh Water, or Clean Water, I'm sorry, and Sanitation wrote to Mayor Kevin Johnson. Katerina Albuquerque said the independent expert visited a community of homeless people in Sacramento, California, where she met a man who called himself the sanitation technician for the community. He engineered a sanitation system that consists of a seat with a two-layered plastic bag underneath. Every week, Tim collected the bags full of human waste, which vary in weight between 130 to 230 pounds, and hauls them on his bicycle a few miles to the local public restroom. Once a toilet becomes available, he empties the contents of the bags, packs the bags with leftover residue inside a third plastic bag, ties it securely, and disposes of them in the garbage, then sanitizes his hands with water and lemon. He says even though this job is difficult, he does it especially for the women involved in the camp. I'd like to remind you that we are facing double-barreled, 106-digit-degree days of high temperature without barely dipping below 70 degrees. That's a life-threatening situation. We should have the water fountains turned on on K Street and in the parks, and perhaps misting stations. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Last speaker is Mr. Wake, but he has not arrived yet.
Okay, so Mr. Wake has not arrived, and with the indulgence of the council, when Mr. Wake arrives, since he sent an electronic request earlier today, when he arrives, and he said he'd be here around 5:30, we will find a time to hear his public comment. So with that, we'll move to our special presentations. Would the clerk please call the first presentation?
So we have Come Celebrate the Best of California, but I do believe they are running late. I've been notified that they have not yet arrived, so perhaps we take that one last.
Okay.
We'll be then to award the 2017 George H. Clark Scholarship.
And I think I'm handing this off to City Manager Howard Chan and Councilmember Geta. Is that true?
Well, every year, there we go. Every year, the City of Sacramento awards a recognition of scholarship to a student in our city, the George H. Clark Memorial Scholarship. And the award this year goes to an awardee also from the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association. And the awardee is from Hiram Johnson, and that awardee is Lisa Doe. Is Lisa here yet? Well, everyone's running late today.
Okay.
Well, let's give everybody, I know Lisa's probably, her parents are probably watching on TV, but let's give her a big round of applause.
Right.
But along with the city and the Neighborhood Association, there's been over 50 students at Hiram Johnson who've received scholarships in that area, and we congratulate them all for their future endeavors and careers.
Fantastic. Now, that's Hiram Johnson, that's not the West Campus, that's the main campus.
That is the main campus.
Okay.
Now, it's called West, I guess, but it was, it used to be a middle school, junior high before that.
How long have they been doing the George Clark Scholarship?
The George Clark, uh... See, well, it was established, actually, in 1921.
Gracious.
So, this has been going on for quite a while.
Fantastic. Okay. Well, when she shows up, we will honor her and bring her to the front, so you can give her a round of applause while she comes forward. Next item on the special presentations.
Okay, I know someone is here for this item. Mr. Leatherman is here for the Life Looks Good on You that's presented by the SAC County Department of Regional Parks.
Okay. And then I'll hand it off to Councilmember Hanson for comments on this as well.
Had you listed.
Oh, really? Oh.
Mr. Leatherman, how you doing, sir?
I'm well. Thank you for having me. Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks for Sacramento County, and I want to thank the council for having me tonight as we kick off our summer, as well as remind everybody a very important safety message that we began last year. For many years, we've had our Kids Don't Float program, both with the city, with the county, with the City Fire Department, with the City Parks and Rec Department, as well as the County Regional Parks Department. And last year, in responding to some unfortunate deaths that we had on the American River, we started our Life Looks Good on You campaign. And with the clerk, do we have the overhead for the presentation, or do I control that down here? Just right there, it's just fine. So we have both of our Life Looks Good on You and our Kids Don't Float websites, but most importantly, I just want to highlight some of the partnerships that we've had in the last couple of years. Here you see our SAC Republic FC players, and we have a number of them this year that have graciously donated just their persona in order to be a model for our program this year, as well as we have athletes from the City College, Sacramento City College, that donated their time to advertise with us in partnership. Along with that, we have a ton of support from your fire departments here, just with their time, effort, and energy. And I want to thank Chief White for making his staff available to support us as we're working to get our safety message out. And that message really is that life looks good on you so much better when you're wearing a life jacket, and so much better when you enjoy the rivers at 109 degrees like it is today. We want people to enjoy the rivers and come out safely on the other side. And so with that, we want to invite the council to take a quick photo with us in celebrating our Life Looks Good on You with our life jackets. We will be emailing those back out to your offices later today or tomorrow, so that you can use them in your social media campaigns and spreading the message to our constituents that life looks good on you. And with that, I entertain any questions that you may have, whether it be Councilman Harris or Hanson.
Yeah, we've got a couple of council members that would like to speak on this. Councilmember Hanson, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll just pitch it. Thank you for being out here. We have Sand Cove and Tuscornia in my district, and those are places where we've had drownings over the past few years, particularly at the confluence because of the American River merging with the Sacramento River. And so I just think it's great that you're doing this. Life looks good on everybody, just like an orange life vest does, but I wanted to take a special moment to thank you, the Rangers, that work really hard at the county and the city to make sure the public's safe. But the DART teams and our fire department go above and beyond as well, helping to educate people. So this is really an important thing to get out there. The rivers are at high flow because there's still so much water in the mountains, and so I think unlike the past couple of years where it may have calmed down by now, it's especially important that the public understand the threats to not being safe and to wear a life jacket. It's really about protecting their own lives. So, thank you, Jeff.
Absolutely. And just to piggyback on that, that your Parks Department does take care of those life jackets at Sand Cove, and we're just a very willing partnership. When we launched this campaign, they basically just said, "How do we help?" So it was a great partnership as well.
Great. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I'd like to say how much more, I'm trying to be positive about this, how much more I like the theme Life Looks Good on You than Kids Don't Float. I always had sort of a negative reaction to that. So I love Life Looks Good on You. That's, that seems more positive. And then also, just, I think congratulations to the whole lot for last year's really great outcome, and I'm hoping too, we can go two-for-two. And I wanted to take just a minute to thank this council, because a couple of years ago, actually, I think two, maybe three, Jay helped me out, years ago, we made the decision to continue to invest in the fire boat and the police boat, and both of those, I think, have been critical components to last year's result. And also trying to fund and figure out how to do this life jacket thing, and our Parks Department has been excellent. I remember probably three years ago, standing on the shores of the Sacramento with Councilmember, then Councilmember McCarty, because we'd had a record number of drownings. And we were just trying to figure out, what the heck do we do? But we, this council doubled down on the life jackets, on the police, on the fire boats, and, you know, within two years, we had our best, best year ever in terms of information. And this year is, is more dangerous than ever because of all that rain, and I think the PIO's office out of the fire department has done an absolutely phenomenal job of staying right on top of this and getting messaging out, and messaging and messaging. So, congratulations. This is something I think we've done really well with our partners, and I'm super proud of that effort.
Fantastic. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hey, Jeff, I just wanted to thank you personally also. Of course, I've got public access at Glenn Hall, and this is a very important program, never more important than this year because of the high flows, and we're going to continue with high flows for a while yet. There's a lot of snow melting, and I think that we're probably going to save lives here, so thanks for your effort.
Absolutely. And to that point, we've got Tuscornia Beach will be opening up next week, along with Discovery Park. So, the first thing that we talked about, my staff, is that the boards go up first, the life jackets go up second, and then we open up the park, so.
Fantastic. Fantastic. So we're going to come down and take a picture with you, right?
Love to have you.
Right? So we're all going to come down.
Please do.
You've got life jackets for all of us, because life looks good on us, and you're going to make a promise that my abs are going to look as good as his, right?
No question. No question.
All right, cool. All right, got you. Come on, Howard. Come on, Shirley.
Shirley's got a gift to you.
I don't want my abs to look good.
Anyone know? Is there? There is? Again? Is it the same place?
All right, it's all about the abs.
Got to say, life looks good.
I'll take the life looks good.
Okay.
You didn't take your shirt off.
We know. Yeah, do you want to go, Mr. Wake? Richard?
Yeah.
We're going to fit you in right now, if you're ready.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And we appreciate you sending your request in to speak by electronic.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that process worked just fine. There were no problems with that.
Fantastic. So we're going to encourage you and everybody else that's listening to send it directly to the city clerk, so we know that you'll get on the agenda in order to be able to speak, okay?
Yeah, all I had to do was save the document, fill it out, and email it to the clerk's address, so it worked out great.
Perfect. You're a walk-and-talking commercial for us. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, no, hey, it worked just fine. So, anyways, if I come next Tuesday, I'm on vacation, so I don't have to worry about getting off work at 5:00. But anyways. So the reason I wanted to get my two minutes in tonight is because, just to express some concerns, is I, about the homeless issue, is I understand it, you know, there's going to be a workshop next city council meeting on the 27th. It was, it was stated a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully, that's still going to take place. But when I spoke to, I forget who it was I spoke to at City Hall, I guess there's going to be like a two-week, there's not going to be another city council meeting scheduled until July 11th. So if nothing's going to be voted on on the homeless issue at the meeting next Tuesday, this thing is going to be pushed back for a minimum of another two weeks. You know, the temperature is 100 and some degrees outside. It may be cooling off by the weekend, but, you know, but that's us ever so slightly. The temperature is going to be in the high 90s for the most part. And, you know, one, you know, one thing I'd like to mention is one cooling center isn't enough. There's a lot of people out there that are struggling to find water and things like that. And, you know, additionally, even if another, more cooling centers were open, there are still no drinking fountains open on K Street Mall. There's no restrooms. The city is spending a lot of money cleaning up out in front of the library still, as far as I know it. We need to do something now. I mean, there's not much more time to waste. And if I'm incorrect on anything, on not, on more than, if there's more than one cooling center that's open, I humbly apologize. I'm just going by the information I have, but we really need to do, you know, there's no more time to waste. We really need to do these things, and, you know, I don't know what influence anybody here has over the, you know, what's going on at Discovery Park, but I was really kind of sad to see the pictures on Supervisor Curna's Facebook page in regards to all the garbage in the parkway. I mean, this is a public health crisis we're talking about here, with all the garbage and stuff in the city. And lastly, I picked up my homeless friend to do some stuff with him over the weekend. The amount of garbage over in the area on North B Street is really bad. Something needs to be done about that. Please take some action right away. You know, you know, let's not drag this on until the middle of July. Whatever you guys can do, please, let's do something, okay?
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. Councilmember, hold on, Richard. Councilmember Warren would like to speak on this behalf.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to, a couple of things. One, we opened a cooling center in North Sacramento yesterday at Hagginwood Park, so we agree, I agree, that, you know, we should be trying to do more. And there's water provided at that cooling center as well. Also, and I don't want to really say too much, but the mayor and a number of the council have been speaking about these homeless issues, and I think there's something that's going to come to council. He may be prepared to talk about it next week, where we're going to have a, I think, a much more robust plan for dealing with some of the homeless issues, which will also have something for immediate relief, as well as some additional things that we've all been working very hard on. So I think all of us share your frustration as well, as it relates to getting something done with the homeless stuff. This stuff is, you know, it takes a lot of, there are a lot of things that we have to do when we put a facility in place, and it takes time. And so, as you know, I've been trying to push for something that I believe in very much, and I'm hopeful that all of these things will come together here very soon. So, but we are working on it, Richard, so I just wanted you to know that.
Okay.
That there will be something announced very soon, and I think that will, will give some relief to the homeless community.
Great. And we're hoping we're going to see you at our event on July 1st. All right. Hold on, Richard. Councilmember Harris has some comments as well. Richard? Councilmember Harris has some comments as well.
So you mentioned trash on North B Street.
Yeah.
I'd like to make it clear to the public that our impact team picks up hundreds of cubic yards of trash constantly, and in fact, we've worked with solid waste to get a special team to do special pickups. The fact of the matter is that the homeless population generates an enormous amount of trash.
Right.
We are addressing it. It's just trying to keep ahead of a tidal wave. It's not an easy thing to do.
Right. Well, I, I, I get that, sir. I was just commenting on what I noticed, because I have a good friend of mine that I went to college with that lives, currently lives at Volunteers of America. When I was there the other week, I mean, there were people with tents sleeping on, had their tents opened up in the pavement and everything, and the amount of garbage just on this. And I'm not saying you're not doing anything. It was more, if I came across that way, I apologize, but it was just to make more of an awareness that it's out there, and it's just...
Believe me, we're keenly aware.
Okay.
And working hard to get on top of it, but, you know, it's a rising tide. One of the problems we encounter in the River District is street feeding, and that, after one event, we could have North B Street spotless, and in 20 minutes, it could be devastated because of street feeding.
Right, no, I know.
So it's a perennial problem, but we are taking proactive steps.
Okay. No, that's cool. I get that. Richard, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and we'll give you a better update next week. Okay, I'll be here next Tuesday. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity, and thanks for allowing me to come and speak after the public comments. I appreciate the work by the, by the city clerk's office. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. That's the end of our public comments, and we will now move to our consent calendar. Does anybody sign up to speak on the consent calendar?
Yes, items 1 through 18 are on the consent calendar. I do have one change to read into the record. Item number 11, a simple change, the grant project number should be G as in George, 11016100. That changes the resolution as well, so the resolution is amended to note that. We have three people that are signed up to speak. Frank Topping is signed up for item number 14, which is the high-speed charging plaza at Southside Park, as is Bill Boyce. Bill Boyce is also signed up for item number 13, which is the appropriation of funds to the Sacramento Valley Station project. And Eric Frame is signed up for item 15, which is the parking enforcement citation and arrest authority. So Frank, you're first.
Thank you. Good evening again. Recently, the partnership between Zip Cars and SHRA to go ahead and approve three of the charging stations, actually, four, I'm sorry, for three of the individual public housing, or not public housing, SHRA housing, it would be HCV Housing Choice vouchers, low-income... low-income, possibly disabled, to have free access monthly, plus free use of the zip cars that are electrically charged, and a fourth station, which should be built at the Central Valley, or Sacramento Valley Station, the rail depot down there. I would like to move that, or propose that you consider for future implementations for charging stations, to consider the entire population of SHRA that might be disabled, older adults, or low-income, well, they're all low-income. But a pilot project such as this could dry up and blow away without adequate participants, and that's one of my worries. But also, I'm considering fairness to everybody. But if you need participants to sign up for that fourth station at the railroad station, let me know. I'm here.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay, Bill?
I'd like to thank the city council and city staff for the opportunity to make comments on the electric vehicle-related consent calendar items tonight. Name's Bill Boyce. I'm the manager of the Electric Transportation Distributed Energy Strategy at S-Mud, and S-Mud supports consent items number 13 and 14. We just heard item 13 supports the deployment of electric vehicle, deployment at the SAC Valley Train Station with zip car-type share car arrangements in partnership with the city Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District and SHRA. We support this effort because it does primarily move vehicles into disadvantaged communities through that partnership, and also because that location has good high profile in which overall adoption we feel will be further supported in the community. Item 14 supports city EV Go deployment of a high-power DC fast-charging station down at South Side Park. We believe that's a great location, given the fact it's at the nexus of I-5 and US-50, where a lot of traffic, and also with regards to concentrated parking in the area under the XY interchange, the farmer's market, and some of the development going on down in Broadway. So, we think that's a good fit. That particular station is kind of one of the first in our area with public street-side capability. We think that's a very important aspect of that, to give additional charging access to folks in multifamily and some of the midtown areas that wouldn't necessarily have access to that. Lastly, we like the project. It shows strong partnership between all the parties supporting that, city, S-Mud, and the private sector are all coming together to support that. And of course, all this helps reduce greenhouse gas and criteria pollutants in our community to improve air quality and health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Eric?
This is on item 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, parking. So, the parking we pay goes directly towards the stadium, the stadium that the people did not want, 4% pull, and that's close to 1%. So, our parking goes to the stadium that we didn't want. The parking prices have recently gone up. The parking time, you guys are putting stickers, 10:00 PM stickers, so the parking time's up. Got these street cleaning days that magically appear out of nowhere and give people tickets. So, now, it sounds like we're going to allow arresting people to be, arresting people for not paying the parking ticket? Is that what it is?
This is your time to make public comments, sir, not ask questions right now?
No questions. No further questions, okay. So, all right, so we're going to, after raising the prices, all right, so we'll start in the beginning. We didn't want the stadium to begin with, the people didn't. They said so. If you go in the very beginning, 2001, the Kings were rigged out of their playoff victory by the NBA. In 2008, the ref came out and said so. Now, in 2015, 14, 13, the NBA comes to Sacramento, comes to our leaders and says, "If you don't purchase a stadium, then we're moving the Kings." So, and then, what happened was, the people got the bill, and we're still paying the bill with our parking tickets. So, we didn't want the stadium. The NBA rigged a playoff against the Sacramento Kings. They, if we had any leadership whatsoever with courage, they would have demanded the NBA pay for that stadium, not the people of Sacramento. Okay? Furthermore, I don't know why we're arresting people for not paying parking tickets. Well, it makes sense, given the rest of it, but I think we should legalize parking. Let's legalize parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I think that concludes the public comment.
Okay, that concludes public comment on the item. We have a few councilmembers like to speak on this. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to speak to a couple of the items that are on the agenda. I'll move the consent calendar first, before I forget. Number five, the zoo. I know Jody Ulick has worked very hard with the zoo, and we will be recruiting a new executive director. I'm very sad to see Kyle Burks getting a great job in New Orleans. I think it's now public, but I just wanted to wish him well in his new capacity. And any of you that are really passionate about the zoo, that want to help us build a world-renowned institution, please check that out. Next, I know this is in Mr. Harris's district, but Hemavitz Park. Michael Hemavitz, I went to law school with his daughter Julia, and he was the guy who started Second Saturday, actually, I think, on Del Paso Boulevard. And that's a very fine name for a park, Mr. Harris. You're lucky to have that park, and I can't wait to see what it looks like when it's all done, but I want to congratulate you on that, because that's really, really awesome. Finally, EV Go. The council, a couple of months ago, passed a pilot program strategy through the Public Works Department, and this is one of the first things we're bringing up through that, allows us to try new things. I think EV Go is going to be investing significant amount of money in this charging station, but one of the things we've been working on with the Public Works staff, and it addresses Frank's comments, are trying to bring charging stations to various parts of the city using our on-street, using our street infrastructure to provide on-street charging. And so, there's several other companies that want to use this model, maybe not the intensity of what's going on at South Side Park with several chargers all in one place, but we want to continue to embrace electric vehicle charging, and I'm glad to see S-Mud is here. But I think it's a great opportunity to try something different, and to really continue to move forward in our greenhouse gas reduction strategies, along with some of our other partners. So, it's a great, it's a great thing. And with that, I just want to thank the Public Works staff for trying to make it happen and working with us on all the other things.
Okay, Councilmember Hanson has moved the item. Councilman Maguera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and second the consent calendar, and also, I wanted to make some comments about EV Go, and I'm glad that we're moving in this direction. About a year ago, the city passed its expedited permitting for electrical vehicle charging in residential units, and that allows up to, I think, Level 3 as well, charging through our process. And I think it's a good way that we're trying to increase access for charging in other areas to improve our air quality. Also, I know we're getting close to the implementation of the VW settlement. Hopefully, we get to those final points there, but I know in, over in the Lemon Hill Project for mutual housing, it's going to be one of the test areas, and it's exciting to kind of move in that direction to get more alternatives to fossil fuels. And with that, I think I said I'll second the item, and...
You did. Okay, Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. One on item 15, the citation and arrest authority. Is that required to be cited by name, or can we do by position?
What's being provided is consistent with the code requirements where the council approves positions that would have the arrest authority. As to whether or not it has to have both the names and the persons filling that position, I don't have the answer for that, but I could get it for you shortly.
But this short?
This short. Good evening, members of the city council. Yes, the city code does actually require by resolution that the names be listed. We are looking at the code right now to see if we could revise it, because it is an administrative process that is require us to write citations. So, we are looking at the code right now to streamline that process.
Hopefully, it doesn't have to be by name, so it's not a council action every time we have someone leave and another person come in to take that position.
That's correct. We're looking at changing the code to actually take out the resolution part, because the state law only requires us to have an ordinance on the books, and so, we're going to change that and designate the city manager to delegate that authority.
Good deal. And the second one on the EV Go. Bill, could you come back up?
I think he was a S-Mud board member for 20 years.
First of all, I continue to be really impressed with S-Mud. What an organization. I was proud to be on that board for 15 years, and I see you have continued to innovate and do great things in the city. The Shine Program is outstanding to give grants for us to improve, for neighborhood improvement, for after-school programs and the like. But on the EV Go, are those fast chargers, and how long is fast charging now, since I've been away for three years?
There'll be actually two types of fast chargers going in, one of which we would call standard DC fast charging, not to get too technical, but that's at a 50 kilowatt. That would charge up most of the EVs on the market now in 20 to 30 minutes. The technology that's also coming, though, that station is 150 kilowatts, and that should be able to charge your car up in most of the vehicles out there, probably in the 15-minute timeframe.
Good grief, when I left S-Mud, it was four hours was fast charge?
I'll just kind of, there's actually research and strong movements to have the ability to charge up a lot of cars in under 10 minutes headed down the technology pipeline.
Technology is really improving. But thank you, and be sure to pay us on the hour, and our thanks for all the wonderful things coming out of S-Mud.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Thanks again, Vice Mayor. So, I drive an electric car, and I'm pretty excited about the charging infrastructure that's taking place in Sacramento. There are charging stations all over the city now, but the newer fast-charge technology is a real boon, so I look forward to trying it. So, there's kind of a nexus about that in the Michael Hemavitz Park, because McKinley Village, the developer, had the foresight to pre-wire all the homes for EV chargers, which is the first development that I know of in Sacramento that has taken that tack. And that's a really great thing, and I look forward to a lot of those residents using electric vehicles, because they sure work well. As far as Michael Hemavitz Park, I agree with you on all points, Councilmember Hanson. Michael was pivotal in Sacramento on the arts scene, and the developer of McKinley Village has sort of taken that to heart, and all of the parks in McKinley Village have a public art theme. They're really pretty exceptional, and I invite everybody to go look at them, because they're different and they're unique, and I really appreciate the arts incentive there. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Ashby?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Hanson and our housing agency, and Ali Yosefi, who's here today, on this Bellevue, which we're approving some final loan documents on today, too, on this calendar, that this is a really good use of the Housing Trust Fund. So, it's about, I think it's about a little over $2 million out of the Housing Trust Fund, and you know, it is a restoration project, and it gives us housing in a housing crisis that will be good in an area where we need it, at a rate that we need it. And so, I just want to say good job to all involved, LaShel Dozier and her team, Ali Yosefi, and Councilmember Hanson. This is good work, and I know it's on the consent, so it has a tendency to just slide through, but it's something that people come here every week and ask us to work on, and they're doing it, and good on you guys.
Fantastic. It has been moved by Councilmember Hanson. It's been seconded by Councilmember Maguera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All opposed? All right, let's do this again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All abstain. It is unanimous. Thank you. We'll not mess with you guys. It must be the heat. Okay, we're going to move back in our agenda to one of the special presentations that we were not able to do earlier. I'd like to bring up the CEO, Michael Pickering, I mean, I'm sorry, Rick Pickering, to talk to us about celebrating the best of California. Rick?
Honorable Vice Mayor Jennings, distinguished members of our great city council, city manager Chan, welcome on board, and talented executive team members. Thank you so much for your dedicated leadership and service to the people of our great community, along with the city, the city staff, city council. Cal Expo exists to help build a stronger community. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share a little bit of information about your California State Fair, and I appreciate those of you that called me and said, "Could you share some of the other things that you do outside of fairtime?" So, I'll try and keep it very, very brief, so we have more than 500 event days a year. So, just briefly, recently, we were activated as a regional shelter and distribution site for the Oroville Dam Incident. On one particular day during that incident, we did more than 10,000 meals to the, to people that had been displaced. We're very pleased to continue to be the largest blood drive in Northern California in our partnership with Univision and Blood Source. In fact, the blood drive just took place last week again. We continue to host the Free Dental Clinic. We saw about 1,800 people come in for free dental services last year. Our State Fair Farm, in addition to the thousands of children that come and tour from their schools throughout the year, we also do food harvesting and food gleaning, and we're able to provide more than seven tons of fresh produce to local food banks over the last year from our State Fair Farm. The Salvation Army this last holiday period, we're able to assist them in providing food and clothing for more than 2,000 local needy families. Additionally, we continue to be the host home for the Sacramento County Fair. We've been declared by the federal government as the national pharmaceutical stockpile for all of Northern California, which means if there's a pandemic, the federal government would fly in pharmaceutical supplies to the military bases around us. It would all be shipped to Cal Expo. For those of you that watch Walking Dead, we would be like the apocalypse center for the distribution of pharmaceutical supplies for all of Northern California. Additionally, we're designated as a Bay Area tsunami recovery facility, given that we're inland and the way probably wouldn't make it this far. And we, last year, we became officially designated as a fallback seat of government for the state of California. So, if anything happens at the Capitol, the teams, the agencies, and government would move to Highway Patrol and to Cal Expo. So, as part of that, we've received quite a bit of Homeland Security funding, and we now have almost 200 security cameras on grounds at Cal Expo. I mentioned the 500 event days, but many of those event days are also cultural festivals. So, we're a cultural celebration for members of the Latino community, the Mung community, Chinese community, Hawaiian community, a number of other communities. And over this last year, we now, you can view our website in nine different foreign languages. So, whatever language you have, there's an opportunity to come and check out things at the Cal Expo website. Additionally, I think you're all well aware of that we generate thousands of jobs. We drive commerce. We put people in local hotel rooms, and this last year, we generated more than $6 million in local county and state taxes, from employment taxes to sales tax to bed tax, possessory interest tax, et cetera. 2017 represents your 164th California State Fair, and it represents our 50th anniversary on the Cal Expo property. Earlier, back in the 1940s, members of the legislature had a vision to, that they were outgrowing the Stockton Fairgrounds, so they purchased 1,000 acres where we're currently located. 1962, Governor Pat Brown, the father of our current governor, put together a steering committee to design the new Cal Expo State Fair properties, and he brought on board a gentleman whose first name's Walt and last name's Disney, who brought his Imagineers here to Sacramento and helped design the Cal Expo facility. That's why you see the waterways, the water tower, and the iconic monorail. So, in celebration of 50 years at Cal Expo, we opened in 1968, the poster, and we have a copy for everyone on the council. We have several gift bag items here, which are really promotional pieces on your state fair, but you'll see the poster, the retro images that are there. You'll see the monorail moving from the past to the future. You'll see people. You'll see the 9/11 monument, which is one of the more interesting ones west of the Mississippi. A lot of ties back to Disney. So, you'll also have a recycling basket... A lot of ties back to Disney. So you'll also have a recycling basket, as we continue to move out of plastic bags. You'll see some other things in there. You also already were that we conduct the oldest wine competition in the United States. This year, we had close to 3,000 entries. We now have the third-largest craft beer competition in the United States, taking place at State Fair, along with dairy competitions, as well as commercial olive oils. Those are in addition to the thousands of other amateur competitions that we have and that we promote. And yes, we have a few samples for you. We'll get those to your offices a little bit later on. Something new this year, we've done a great job of celebrating the harvest, celebrating farming, celebrating the food that you and I enjoy eating. But we wanted to go to the next level this year, so we're putting together a special exhibit in celebration of the contributions of farmworkers. A member of this city council actually made a suggestion of, what are you guys going to do for farmworkers? So we will be dedicating an exhibit this year showcasing the rich and historic contributions of California's agriculture industry, which includes our vital relationship with farmworkers. It'll be a celebration of Cesar Chavez, particularly this city that has a beautiful park named in his honor, but we've worked with his foundation, members of his family. So they will also be participating with us as we celebrate those contributions. Today, California's agriculture industry, separate from cannabis, is already contributing $47 billion a year to the California economy. So stay tuned for continued growth. Time capsule displays, since it's our 50th anniversary, that'll be something new at the fair. And we're saluting things, all things California. So you're going to see two buildings dedicated to dinosaurs. And if you're thinking state fair dinosaurs, no, we're not celebrating Republicans or Democrats on the dinosaur concept, but the Brea Tar Pits. Brea Tar Pits are the third-largest, most-important tar pits in the world, significant history, as well as tourist value here in California. Additionally, we're celebrating Hollywood and horses. So you'll get to come out and meet the horse that actually played Seabiscuit in the movie. There will be horses from Walking Dead, and you think, well, okay, Hollywood's part of California. Many people don't know that California's movie industry owes its roots to a bet that Leland Stanford made regarding a horse. Do all four hoofs leave the ground at the same time, or does a horse always have one foot on the ground? He hired a very famous photographer, Mr. Mubray, set up a series of trip strings across the track, had the horses run by, took individual photographs, laid them end to end, then put them in a pile, and thumbed through them. 10 years later, someone named Edison created something known as the motion picture based off that initial technology. So horse racing, movie industry, California, it all ties together. And Rancho del Paso, which spread from the airport to below Cal Expo, at one point in time was the largest thoroughbred farm in the entire world, and exported so many horses that Great Britain's Parliament actually adopted legislation to limit the number of thoroughbreds coming to Great Britain out of this area. Just a little bit of our history. Some gentleman named, had a horse named Lodi. We now have a community named Lodi. We had a famous trainer named Winters. We now have a community named Winter after that famous trainer. So the history of horses in this area has been quite dramatic over time. We're also able to, proud to let you know, that we'll have 14 electronic vehicle charging stations, and they're in a partnership with SMUD, and they're actually going to be underneath the SMUD's power grid, which is in parking lot B, so you can park under a solar panel and charge your electric car while you recharge your batteries at the state fair. Community acts. We've increased our community acts by another 50%. Military Appreciation Day is back. First Responders' Appreciation Day is back. We have our 17 free concerts every night at the fair, three weeks of thoroughbred racing. Sacramento Republic continues to grow at your state fair at Papa Murphy Park. We have a local Sacramento Republic season game as well. We now have an international game with Pachuca out of Mexico. So that'll be an exciting opportunity as well. We recently signed a lease agreement with Rockin' Brews to build a Rockin' Brews Family Entertainment Restaurant on the corner of Arden, Ethan, and Expo Center, so we look forward to that continuing to move forward. And I mentioned the farm tours a little bit earlier, and we want to thank you that local kids and local schools are able to come out to the State Fair Farm throughout the year and take tours. We've had classes come from afar as way as Red Bluff and Reading, which is quite spectacular that they're coming to Cal Expo to do farm tours. So thank each of you on the city council for all that you do. This Thursday, we'll be presenting the top wine, beer, craft beer, cheeses, olive oil awards on the state Capitol steps, and then we'll have the State Fair Gala Thursday night. There's still some tickets, a few tickets left available for that, in which we celebrate the agricultures of the year for the state of California, the vintner of the year, et cetera. And then Sunday, September 10, we're hosting our second-ever Blue Ribbon Brunch in the farm, and people who attend that brunch get to taste the best of the best from throughout the state. In addition to the products I've already mentioned, last year, we also made cookies and brownies and things of that nature from the award-winning recipes. You can tell by my girth, they were all outstanding. I sampled each one. So you're certainly welcome to come out and enjoy that. Now you're saying, what are the dates of the state fair? July 14 through 30. So we're only about three weeks out. Things are coming together quite quickly. We hope that you'll all be able to come out and enjoy us. And one thing that we always want to continue to share with the city council is that although we are a designated state agency, and that we're the only fair in the state's constitution, and that Sacramento is the designated home for the state fair in the state's constitution, we receive no financial support from the state of California. So everything you now see at Cal Expo, the 80 structures, the more than 800 acres that we take care of, we do it by being part of this community. We run it like a business as a state agency, but we always appreciate your support. And all the folks at Sacramento are welcome to come out and enjoy the fireworks show on the Fourth of July. The doors open at 5 o'clock. The show itself is free, and we do that because the city helps out a little bit with that, as does the county. So we thank you for that. We'll see you at the Fourth. We'll see you at your state fair, and we're available to answer any questions. And thank you so much for posting information about us on your social media channels that are out there. Certainly come out and see the celebration we're doing for farm labor in the state of California. Mayor Jennings, if there's any questions?
Thank you very much, Rick. I think we do have a few councilmembers that'd like to make comments. Councilmember Harris?
Rick, it's always, it's always great to see you, Rick. Of course, Cal Expo's in District 3, and I've lived across the river from you for 30 of your 50 years, and have gone to the state fair almost every year, to tell you the truth. You know, your narrative was as interesting as the state fair is, informative, fun, and instructive. And that's really why I like the state fair, especially the agricultural part of it, because it shows a lot of young people the roots of California, as well as the arts, the fun, the culture. It's really, it shows the best of California, and I think you do a really great job with it. So I just wanted to end by putting in a plug for the return of the sand sculptures. I think that was my all-time favorite, and I hope at some point they come back, because they were tremendously popular.
Be great. We might be able to challenge the city council against the Board of Supervisors or together to see what your sand castles might look like.
There you go. Thank you.
So, Rick, every year, I think we have an incredible state fair right here in Sacramento, and I think I heard you say the dates of the 14th of July through the 30th.
July 14 through the 30th, yes.
Through the 30th. So it's about two weeks of fun, a lot of history, and you gave us much of it tonight. Great food, entertainment. You have some of the best shows that I've ever seen. And I don't, did I hear you mention who's coming this year?
Well, we have 17 nights, so it all depends on what type of music you like. If you love Melissa Estridge, she's our closing night. Sheila E's opening night. Sister Sledge. If you like some really smooth R&B, we have Brian McKnight. If you're a country fan, Trace Atkins. The list goes on and on. There's some retro music in there from Lita Ford. If you're a hard rock guitar player or enjoy that music. Smash Mouth. If you recall Smash Mouth, you're probably my age. If your kids recall Smouth Mash, it's because they watched Shrek movies. So there's a number of activities. There's a Beatle tribute band out there. Ozil Motley is our opening Sunday. So it just depends on the variety of music you like. And the beauty is, the fair concert is free with the price of admission to the fair. If you're one of the first 1,000 crazy fans that want to get up close and personal, you can buy an upfront reserved seat, so the sweat of the performer spills out on you.
But, and then also, you always have something that is the most interesting thing, like fried ice cream, or...
Well, we have our state fair chef that puts on a variety of meals. We do vegan meals, vegetarian meals. Certainly, we have beef. We eat a lot of tasty products at state fair, a lot of healthy recipes, celebrity chefs that come out. But there are a number of deep-fried items, because frankly, we have our own police force, and we have no tax support. So selling those corn dogs and selling those carnival rides actually helps us keep the property open, and so people like yourselves can enjoy it.
So this is truly the best of California, but it's also the best of Sacramento. So thank you for you and your staff.
We had all but one county participate in state fair last year, and we know who it was. It was Alpine. So we're going after those 1,200 people this year to try to get them to come down.
Thank you for all the gifts, and thank you for the presentation. Big round of applause. Okay. Okay, we will now move to our next item. I think we're moving to our public hearings.
Public hearings, right. Item number 19 is the Neighborhood Lighting District.
Eric? Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, too. Good evening, Vice Mayor Jennings, members of council. Eric Frederick with the Finance Department. The item before you is the annual public hearing for the Neighborhood Lighting District, which is comprised of three neighborhoods: Swanston Estates, Colonial Heights, and Youngs Heights. Assessments are levied to provide funding for the maintenance and energy costs of neighborhood lighting in these areas. The annual assessments for each subdivision vary based on operational needs and are at or below the maximum authorized rates. The total property owner assessment for fiscal year 2017-18 is projected to be $44,369 and represents an increase of approximately 1.56% from the current year total assessment. With this item, there are no ballots or votes to count. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the fiscal year 2017-18 assessment for the Neighborhood Lighting District. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions if you have.
Thank you very much, Eric. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Councilmember Geta?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is a requirement that's required of us by the state to do every year, so, but along with it every year, I'll make my annual comment. And that is that I hope that we can start to look at a bigger picture on how we get street lighting into communities that don't have streetlights. For whatever reason, the city or the developer at the time, when they first created communities, didn't add streetlights there, and they're a part of public safety, a part of getting people to walk out in communities all year round. So with that, I will move to close the public hearing and move the item, and hope that someday we will get streetlights.
All right, it's been moved and seconded twice. Do any of my councilmembers have any further comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Let the record show, it is 7 to 0. Okay, Mr. Frederick, I think you have the next item as well.
I do. Good evening again. Eric Frederick, still with the Finance Department. The item before you now is the annual public hearing for the Neighborhood Landscaping District. This is comprised of 34 subdivisions located throughout the city. Assessments are levied to finance the maintenance of landscaping improvements located adjacent to and/or along the frontage of these subdivisions. The annual assessments for each subdivision vary based on operational needs and are at or below the maximum authorized rates. The total property owner assessment for fiscal year 2017-18 is projected to be $278,094 and represents an increase of approximately 3.78% from the current year total assessment. With this item, there are also no ballots or votes to count. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the fiscal year 2017-18 assessment for the Neighborhood Landscaping District. And I am available again if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
We do not.
Okay, with that, the public comment is now closed, and I'm now looking for councilmembers to have comments. Councilmember Carr?
The hearing and move the item.
Been moved by Member Carr, seconded by Member Shinier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Let the record show, we are 7-0. Thank you, sir. Very good job. Okay, with that, we will now move to the discussion calendar, and we have item number 24.
This is item 21, I believe, but it's the 2016 General Plan Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Ryan DeVore, Director of Community Development. My team and I are here to provide you with the summary of the progress of our general plan and housing elements for the calendar year 2016. We're also proposing a resolution which initiates the five-year update of our general plan, a citywide document that is supported by all departments. This effort is fully funded, using fees already collected. A five-year update cycle keeps the general plan current and relevant. It allows us to make adjustments, recognizing changes in market conditions, technology, and demographics. It also gives us an opportunity to accommodate new state legislation, as well as solicit feedback from neighborhoods and business leaders. We plan to conduct a scientific survey to identify community needs, concerns, and areas of success. It's also an opportunity to support the city manager's effort to provide neighborhood-based services and planning. Finally, the update refreshes our master environmental impact report, which is used to provide sequel clearance for both public and private development. Some of the past general plan implementation measures include efforts to streamline new development, such as an updated and effective planning and development code, market-based parking standards, a second unit ordinance, citywide development impact fee program, the fee deferral ordinance, the skip or statewide community infrastructure program, and the mixed income housing ordinance. And with that, I'd like to introduce Remy Mendoza, who will provide the 2016 general plan update.
Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor Jennings and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm presenting the city's general plan annual report for the 2016 calendar year. The annual report is used to identify trends, engage the successes and barriers in implementing the plan. For this report, we've reached out to all city departments and included in our report our combined success stories. There are three main parts in the annual report. The livability index tracks 14 indicators of a livable city. Each indicator has a set of data points that identify economic development and cultural trends. We also track development activity to monitor trends in residential and non-residential development. Last, we are also reporting on the general plan implementation measures, which tracks the progress the city departments have made in implementing the general plan's goals and policies. The annual report is guided by six themes shown here on this slide. Community outreach identified these themes as important in reaching the overall general plan vision. The first theme is growing smarter. The general plan envisions that most new development in the city will occur in infill areas identified as opportunity areas. There are over 70 key opportunity areas in the city, largely located in corridor centers and districts with vacant or underutilized land. In October of 2009, the city council adopted a resolution identifying certain opportunity areas as priority or Tier 1 shovel-ready sites. These are high-priority areas based on near-term potential for development, return on investment, and significant economic growth. As part of the annual report, we track the amount of development that occurs in the shovel-ready areas, which are shown in the red and blue on the map. Over the last seven years, 62% of new residential units and 59% of commercial, retail, office, and industrial development has occurred in these Tier 1 and Tier 2 shovel-ready sites. In these next few slides, I'm going to highlight a few projects that help us, help the city meet its infill goals. Here are several of the infill projects, including the 19J mixed-use project for 19th and J Street, the Innovate Corporate Center in North Natomas, the Yamani Project at 25th and J Street, the Park Mixed Use Project in Southland Park, and the Folsom Boulevard Mixed Use Project on Folsom and 66th Street. Additionally, there's a Copperstone Village across from the Casumnes River, City College, the Press Building at 21st and Q Street, and the Sheldon Road Apartments as well. Preparing for the development of large infill sites is also part of growing smarter. In 2016, the Sacramento Rail Yards Project was approved. Supporting a vibrant economy is another guiding theme in the general plan. The annual report provides data on the city's economic resurgence, steady household income, as well as new private development projects. In support of a vibrant economy, the city is also making development easier through approval of the Phase 2 of the Planning and Development Code to further encourage and streamline development review, and recent approval of the new secondary dwelling unit regulations to allow for an increase in unit sizes, ease the setback requirements for garage conversions, and remove the requirement for solid waste containers. The city continues to be a leader in sustainability. As an example, Sacramento was recently hailed as the number one green fleet in North America, with a fleet that is powered by over 50% alternative fuels. SMUD also recently opened its fifth electrical vehicle fast-charging station at the Sacramento Valley Station. Creating a healthy environment is another theme of this report. In this section, we have included some accomplishments from police, fire, and parks for 2016. Additionally, the building division received the California Building Department of the Year Award. The fire department included 58 new fire Also, on the theme of making great places, in 2016, the energy efficiency and sustainability aspects of the Sacramento Valley Station was a priority for the restoration of the building. Outside bicycle racks and lockers are able to accommodate approximately 140 bicycles to encourage sustainable choices beyond the station. As part of making the Great Places theme, the Golden Wind Center opened in the fall of 2016 and has since hosted over 72 events, with over 500,000 people attending Kings Games, music concerts, UFC fights, basketball tournament games, and many more events. In summary, the economy has rebounded, development continues to gain stride but at a new normal, livability in Sacramento continues to improve, and general plan implementation measures are underway. Staff recommends that the council receive and file this report and pass a resolution to initiate the five-year update of the general plan. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have public comment on this item?
We have one person that has signed up, Frank Topping.
Frank?
Evening again, council. I forgot to mention earlier on the electrovoltic presentation that I was an electrician for 33 years. In fact, Steve Hanson might recall something about a pharmaceutical company over there in Vacaville. I was the electrician that did the splice that put them online, plus nuclear work and oil industry up in Alaska. Wildly in favor of the advancements we're making, however, I have reviewed the file that came along with it. Didn't see much mention except one in the margin about homeless. I know it just seems like it's awfully exclusionary or that there is a definite failure to document that we're looking ahead, and I'd like to underscore, I really appreciate the progress and the effort, the sweat you're putting into homeless, but without putting it right up there up front, it's a little disappointing. On the other hand, congratulations on everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, that was our only speaker. The public comment period is now closed. My councilmembers have comments. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First, I just want to thank you, Ryan, Jim, and Remy for all of your hard work. I know that we've had a lot on your plate, particularly the central city-specific plan, numerous other ordinance changes. You mentioned the second unit changes that were done. I think that you've really been demonstrating the nimbleness of the department through all the work that you've been doing. You deserve a lot of credit, and the projects only speak to the end result, but much like the iceberg, that's only a little portion of the work that goes on on a daily basis. I didn't get all the way down into the scoping piece of the five-year update. I just want to make sure we didn't lose track of some of the things the council had asked for related to general plan changes that we gave as direction during the McKinley Village approval. One was to remove the connector, the Sutter's Landing Connector from the general plan in the next major update, and I believe that this is that update. And there may have been other items that, over time, have aggregated like that but maybe not been tracked. Jim, I just want to mention it so it's on your radar as we go into this process that we grab those things that need to be changed and updated. So, thanks. And I'll move the item.
All right, it's been moved by Member Hanson. Member Getta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm going to second the item. Couple of the issues I wanted to bring up. On one of the doing, growing smarter, I want us to hopefully start to look at, to consider the issue that a lot of our commercial corridors are facing with B, Level B and C retail slowly going out. Kmart just announced that they're closing down, and Sears is closing down, and so there's a big question about what we're going to do with a lot of those large, huge parcels in those areas. So I'd like us to start considering on our commercial corridors, and I know we have it as a Tier Two item on our growth plan and on some of those major corridors, but I think as part of the themes that we're looking at, we should start looking at it in those contexts. Couple of things I wanted, so on that piece, dealing both on the job side and on the housing side, I want to look at how that fits into our general plan as we move our updates. Couple of things I wanted to highlight that I noticed in the general plan numbers. One, 2016, we had an increase of air quality days that were above the federal attainment level. That is a concerning issue about air quality, and if we look at which communities get impacted, generally, a lot of them correlate with low-income communities, disadvantaged areas, higher four-way boulevards. So I think the EV thing that we're doing today, a lot of the EV thing, the ordinances and changes and whatnot are important, and some of our factors, some of the themes that we're trying to do deal with that. I also wanted to point out that on the issue of equity, both our poverty numbers is a percentage has increased, our A-through-G numbers, and UC and CSU number of high school graduates in our area who have met those requirements has decreased. And then also, when you look at 2006 and then the 2016 numbers of our bachelor's degrees per the percentage of people living in the city, that also has decreased percentage-wise. While we've increased it per capita, I think percentage-wise, it's a concerning thing because when I look back at an economic study that we had, the cities that were improving had higher education attainment levels per capita. So I think those are indicators of how we can improve our cities' overall competitiveness. Only one question that I wanted to know is when we look at the indicator of some college, when we're taking that metric, does that include, say, like the 18-month certification programs, trades, getting a, do you know if those numbers are included in there? Or is it some college as in four-year AA or AWAS accredited curriculum?
We obtained the data from the census data, ACS data, and didn't specify exactly that type of a breakdown at that detail, but it's something I can follow up and look into.
It would be helpful if we could do that because from a competitive standpoint, for example, we did see some increases in the some college. And if the some colleges, including some of those trade programs with a type of certification that shows the completion or the competency of a skill, then that actually has a market value and interest that when we're talking to folks about, "Come to Sacramento," that's an important factor, I think, that when you look at our general plan documents that are important. So all that to say, I think a lot of great work, but I think there are some key indicators that I think we should take away when we were starting to look at the data and looking forward at our general plan, and when we go out with our contract to bring people in is the connection on education, career advancement, the impacts on air quality, and then the bigger picture. If we're going to grow smarter, if we're going to figure out how to deal with the rising housing costs, and that'll be the next conversation on the next item, then we should look at our general plan to start reflecting the economic challenges that our commercial corridors are facing, like Stockton Boulevard and Florin and Franklin and all those, and Folsom. Thank you. And with that, I'll second the motion.
All right, moved and seconded. Councilmember Hanson has another point.
Push my button. There you go. Sorry, we're losing it tonight with the heat. I forgot to mention, four of us sit on the Regional Transit Board, and one of the conversations that's been going on is this 1985 agreement about our relationship with regional transit, but it's also raised a question about, within a half-mile of a transit stop, what policies do we have in place? And maybe the general plan is the right avenue for this, maybe it's not. I'd look to you. But are we properly discouraging non-transit oriented uses within the catchment area of a transit stop? Are we incentivizing transit uses within those same catchment areas? And can the general plan be more fine-tuned through this particular update to help us with that process? I think the central city should be well-covered with the specific plan, but some of the other places where we've built out the Blue Line or the Gold Line or some of those other assets, but the land use surrounding those stops doesn't support transit, how are we handling that, and what should the city policies be? I think that, in particular, transit's a big help at reducing congestion, improving walkability, bikeability, community health, but do our, does the general plan really reflect that? And so I know that that's more of a conversation for the planning process, but I wanted to flag it because I do think it's important in our relationship, and Fran has been working with Regional Transit on updating that agreement, and I think if we set out a vision for how we work with the transit agencies and Capitol Corridor, you know, the one stop they have at the Sacramento Valley Station, maybe that's not an issue, but as the San Joaquin Corridor looks to expand their service up through the community, streetcar comes along but gets extended. We also have some opportunity for bus rapid transit through parts of the city where maybe rail's not practical at this point, or how do we really want to look at that and embrace it and use our land use policies to advance those thoughts? So that was really it.
Great. Seeing no further comments from my councilmembers, a motion been made by Member Hanson, seconded by Member Getta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Councilmember Warren abstained. Okay, with that, we have a six to one, I believe? Okay, thank you very much. Good job. Seven to one. My math is off tonight. It's the heat. It's got to be the heat. It's got to be the heat. Okay, next item, please.
Hey, this is item 22. It's the 2016 Housing Element Annual Report.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Marco Gonzalez, and I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. So today, I'm going to briefly talk about the 2016 Housing Element Annual Report. So I'm going to touch on the background of the housing element. We'll get into why we do these annual reports. We'll talk about some program highlights for 2016, and then we'll briefly touch on some trends and challenges. So the 2013 through 2021 Housing Element was adopted in 2013, and it acts as the city's strategic housing plan and reflects the general plan's vision for sustainable growth by 2035. So through the housing element, the city is tasked with doing a few things. We're tasked with increasing the housing stock and assisting with development of affordable housing for households of all income levels. So why do we do these annual reports? Well, first, we're required, under state law, to provide these progress reports towards the housing element goals, and these reports detail progress towards the regional housing needs allocation and status of implementation programs. So the city was assigned its share of the RENA by SECOG for the 2013 through 2021 Housing Element cycle. Under the housing element, the city was tasked with identifying sufficient sites with sufficient zoning to accommodate over 24,000 housing units by 2021. So to be clear, the city doesn't have to build all the units in the RENA, just provide capacity and implementation programs to facilitate development. So through four years, the city has completed 14% of its RENA. So next, I'll talk about program highlights for 2016. First, we have the rehabilitation of Pension K. It's 127 affordable units. Then we had the update to the SRO ordinance to allow additional flexibility to replace and preserve units, adoption of the fee deferral ordinance, and updating the housing trust fund ordinance. So a few more highlights was rapidly rehousing 244 households and assisting 355 persons with emergency shelter. So I won't get too far in the weeds on the trends and challenges, since Ryan already discussed that in our April 18th housing workshop. There's just many barriers to housing, not only in the city but statewide. So continuing on the trends and challenges, we will continue to talk about how we're going to increase affordability and encourage development of affordable housing on our July 18th workshop. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Marco, thank you very much. This is a receive and file item, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do my colleagues have any comments, or do we have any public comment?
We don't have public comment. We have two people that have signed up to speak on this. The first is Eric Frame, and the second, I think this says Kathy Creswell. Kathy?
Hello again. All right. I would like to, once again, put forth the idea, a strategic plan, to get a tiny homes project started up. A tiny own, tiny homes project would increase affordable housing, obviously. Thank you for writing it down. It would create jobs because people could build homes, including the homeless would love to work on building their own homes. It would be affordable housing, create jobs, gets people off the street, and it's also good PR for the city. You guys have said you want Sacramento to be a destination city. You could start by providing a tiny home village to the homeless. We have 13,000 homeless and rising. We have more people living paycheck to paycheck. We have people getting kicked out because of rent hikes. Rent control would be nice. We have people declaring bankruptcy because of our ridiculously high healthcare costs, prices, I should say. So I'd, oh, by the way, Detroit is working on tiny homes. If Detroit can do it, we can do it. St. Louis has already done it, too. So tiny homes, tiny homes, tiny homes. Listen up. It's a good idea. It's good for the economy to get people off the street, creates jobs. Thank you for listening, Mr. Jennings. $10,000 per home sounds pretty reasonable. Heck, I'd buy one. I'm also wondering what the PowerPoint's definition of affordable is, because affordable can be different for different people. There's also too many vacant lots in this city, according to Mr. Mayor, so let's fill some of those vacant lots with some tiny homes.
Thank you very much, Eric.
They can be beautiful homes, too.
Thank you, sir.
Kathy?
Good evening, council. My name's Kathy Creswell, and on behalf of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, I want to commend you for your leadership and the leadership of planning and community development staff and SHRA in addressing housing. And the annual report highlighted a number of the accomplishments that have occurred. However, the annual Housing Element Implementation Report is designed to both engage public policymakers as well as the public, and the public engagement should really take place prior to submitting the report to HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And I can tell you from my more than 25 years' experience at HCD that the communities that were the most successful in addressing their housing needs and implementing their housing elements were those that had very robust public engagement processes. Unfortunately, that did not happen with this update, and there was no specific outreach to homeless or housing communities in the preparation of the report, and it's really a missed opportunity to think about changes, current things. For example, should programs in the element be revised to address making sure that we're more competitive for the cap and trade programs that weren't here when the element was first adopted? Should the innovative program that you have for responsible banking ordinances be actually expedited because it might be relevant to your discussion of additional funding? So engaging the public also allows the opportunity to hear from the community about changing needs. For example, since when the housing element was first adopted, tenants have seen tremendous rent increases at the same time their incomes have declined. So given the hardship that tenants are facing, wouldn't it make sense to look at our housing element and make sure we have programs that are targeted to those? As a result, SHRA is, or SHA, sorry, SHA is requesting that the council direct staff to ensure that future reports include a robust process for community engagement prior to submitting to HCD. Finally, I want to note that the information from the report about permits is particularly timely and reinforces the need for increased effort and resources to develop homes affordable to extremely low-income, very-low-income, and lower-income households. So far, the city has met only 3% of its very-low and low-income need compared to 30%. So engaging the public also allows the opportunity to hear from the community about changing needs. For example, since when the housing element was first adopted, tenants have seen tremendous rent increases at the same time their incomes have declined. So given the hardship that tenants are facing, wouldn't it make sense to look at our housing element and make sure we have programs that are targeted to those? As a result, SHRA is requesting, or SHA, sorry, SHA is requesting that the council direct staff to ensure that future reports are included a robust process for community engagement prior to submitting to HCD. Finally, I want to note that the information from the report about permits is particularly timely and reinforces the need for increased effort and resources to develop homes affordable to extremely low income, very low income, and lower income households. So far, the city has met only 3% of its very low and low income need compared to 38% of the need for moderate income households. And while we clearly need, clearly need more housing for everybody along the housing continuum, the report really does highlight the need to prioritize and target resources for those who are most vulnerable. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no comments at this point in time. Receive and file item. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Okay, we will now move to council comments, ideas, questions, AB 1234 reports, and board and commission appointments as well. And you have an adjourn? Okay. All right. Okay, let's do the appointments first.
I have quite a few, so if you bear with me. We'll start with the Animal Care Citizens Advisory Committee. That'd be Kelly Tibberini and Ken Alteen. Non-advisory board hearing examiners, we have Gerald Kraus and Richard Schaefer. The council district nominations for the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, the mayor has Mariana Sabaniano, Samuel Kinsey, Wendy Hoyt. District One, Basim Elkarah. District Two, Johnny Coleman. District Three, Karen Savage Sangwan. District Four, Mario Guerrero. District Five, Eddie Escobar. Six, Arandi Zamora. Seven, Richard Falcon. Eight, Renee Carter. Also for the Sacramento Youth Commission, District Four, we have Haley Shudin. That concludes those.
Okay. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just three quick announcements. Today's Tuesday. Tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, Hollywood Park Neighborhood is having its association meeting at 6:30 at Hollywood Park Elementary School. And then on Thursday, we're doing a special community meeting in Oak Park and principally to discuss the violence that's been going on in the neighborhood and see if we can come up with some community solutions. We'll have a number of city representatives there and that's at 6:30 at the Oak Park Community Center. There's also on Thursday night Colonial Heights Monthly Meeting at Colonial Heights Library at 6:30. And then on Sunday night in Curtis Park, we'll be having music in the park and I will be scooping Gunther's Ice Cream as I always do. I believe that bittersweet chocolate chip is the flavor of the month, so that will be one of the four flavors. We usually do about 400 scoops until my arm starts cramping up and we have to quit. So Sunday night, 6:00 PM, music in the park, only supposed to be 95 degrees.
Okay, Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Just a few announcements. It's, even though it's going to be warm, we're still going to have our Tahoe Park Food Truck Event on Friday on June 23rd at 5:00 in Tahoe Park. Come and join us. Again, free bike valet with Sacramento Area Bike Association. On then, that next morning on Saturday, the Junior Giants are happening their opening day at 9:00 AM to 10:30 at the George Sims Baseball Field. The George Sims community has hosted the Junior Giants opening for quite a while. It's gotten bigger every year, so come out and enjoy the fun. Also, the first annual College Glen Food Truck Event will happen this Saturday, June 24th, at 4:00 at Glenbrook Park. And so come out and enjoy the event. It's on La Revue Area Drive at Glenbrook Park and we're working in conjunction with the College Glen Little League and a portion of the proceeds will help out the College Glen Little League, so come out and support your local Little League. And finally, the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association Summer Picnic is going to be on Sunday, June 25th, from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Coloma Center. So come out and enjoy all our neighbors and friends over at the city's Coloma Community Center for the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association Annual Summer Picnic from 1:00 to 5:00.
All right. Thank you very much. Sounds like a lot of fun. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to tell people one more time that our Last Pops in the Park concert will be this Saturday at Glen Hall Park. It starts at 6:00 and the band will be unsupervised. That's all I've got.
Okay. Unsupervised. Kids will be supervised, but the band will be unsupervised. Great. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Couple of announcements. One, the District Two Multicultural Festival will be celebrating its fifth annual multicultural festival. It'll be this Saturday at Hagginwood Park, starting at 11:00 AM. It'll go until 6:00 PM. This year's headline entertainer will be Karen White, who has a distinction of having her first album that was released, had three number one hits on it. She was also nominated for several Grammys. She will be performing along with another very famous urban sax trumpet player and performer named Tom Brown. There's also Midnight Players and then a new group called Telusis here in Sacramento will be performing. We will also have spoken word, poetry, there'll be food trucks, vendors, as well as a bunch of information from the city will be there. This is an alcohol, drug, alcohol and drug free event, so please, all are welcome to come out, including all of my colleagues, if they like. I know our city attorney has been there before, Angelique has been there before, Mr. Jennings has been there before, Mr. Harris has been there before. And so all of you, though, are welcome. Would love to see you there. In addition to that, we are doing a celebrity golf tournament will be held this Monday and a number of wonderful people are coming out, including Danny Glover and some other friends of mine will be there. Vice Mayor Jennings will be there. We're raising money this year for First Steps Community, which is a nonprofit that's specializing in sheltering homeless folks that don't have a place to live. And so we will be presenting them with a check sometime in the next week or so. So golf tournament proceeds will go to benefit them. We have a, I think we're about sold out on the tournament, so, but donations are still welcome. So thank you very much.
You can count on my donation, both with golf balls and with money.
There you go, sir. We know your check is good, too.
You know it is.
There you go.
Councilwoman Ashby.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say Happy Bladed Father's Day to the dads on the council. It is a tough job to balance it all and most of you are dad, job, councilmembers a lot. So anyway, thank you for all you do for your kids and the city and balancing all that. I hope you had a great weekend. And then I just want to invite all of you and announce that this Friday we have a movie night in the Thomas and you all know how that goes, so you're welcome to come out and join us if you want to. It is Secret Life of Pets, which should be really fun. And then again, on Saturday morning, we'll have our Farmer's Market from 8:00 to noon in the Regional Park and we'll have yoga in the park, which is now hot yoga, just, you know, naturally, on the natural, at 9:00 o'clock in the morning out there in the Regional Park as well. But if any of you want to come out and experience a North Natomas movie night, you are welcome to join us this Friday. Thanks.
Councilmember Hanson. Yeah, let me do mine first. I'll do District Seven first and you'll close us out. So I want you to come out and celebrate the Fourth of July with District Seven. We will begin the day with our Fourth of July Parade. We'll begin at 10:00. We'll go down Windbridge Drive, pass, starting at Lisbon Elementary School to Goshabend Park. And then after the parade, we're going to have music and a community festival and delicious food trucks and family friendly events, all different kinds of things. And we're also going to have the first annual pet pageant. So if you have a pet, raise your hand if you have a pet. Raise your hand. All right, cool. You can dress up your pet in the fabulous and furious or patriotic, however you want to dress them up. It's going to be a first one. We've got some incredible judges. Judge Barry Long, Superior Court Judge is going to be judging. We've got our student commissioners who will be judging and other community residents as well that'll be in there judging. So it's going to be fun. Cutest costume, most patriotic, and the fury and the fabulous. So those are three categories that your pet can win in. You can pre-register by emailing Yvette, at yvette@cityofsacramento.org. And then I also want to let you know that we've got the Jazz in July Concerts. And there'll be four Jazz in July concerts that'll take place at July the 7th at Mesa Grande Park, July the 15th at Seymour Park, July the 21st at Goshabend Park, and July the 29th at Marriott Park. And some of the artists are Vivian Lee, who most of us have heard in Sacramento, Jose Hernandez, who you may not have heard, and then also Doug Martin. These are all incredible jazz artists and the events are all free to the public and we encourage you to come out to Jazz in Hot July. That concludes our announcements for, oh, one more. I'm sorry, one more. The Sacramento Theater Company did an incredible job on Father's Day and I want to give them their props. They allowed a number of nonprofit organizations, Music Circus. That's, yeah, right. Music Circus, thank you. Thank you for correcting me. Music Circus allowed us to come to the Pavilion, Wells Fargo Pavilion, to see Beauty and the Beast, and it was a number of nonprofits that were invited, those who had maybe not been to the theater, couldn't afford to come to the theater. Anyway, I would say over 1,000 people, 1,500 to 1,000, 1,000 to 1,500, enjoyed seeing Beauty and the Beast and it was just an incredible show. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to do so, but I want to thank Music Circus for allowing us to do that. Councilmember Hanson was there, Councilmember Harris was there, Councilmember Chenier, and I just want to thank them for allowing that to happen and hopefully we'll make it an annual tradition.
Can I add something really quickly? I thought the most, so it was Beauty and the Beast and it was their dress rehearsal that we were able to see and there were hundreds of young people there. And at the beginning of the show, they asked first of all how many of the people had not been to Music Circus and most everyone in the audience raised their hands and then asked how many of these young people had never seen a live theater before. And again, most of them raised their hands. So the most exciting part for me was all these young people, really a first time experience for them. And they just all got into it, participated in the standing ovation at the end of the show. So I want to add my thanks to Music Circus. I think it's a great thing and I think that we can help and I've talked to them and I'm sure all of us will help next year doing a little more outreach to kids who don't normally get that. We all have our mailing list, we all work with youth groups. I think they had a relatively small number compared to what is out there, so we can all help next year. Thanks.
I just have a quick comment on that.
Okay, Member Ha-
And I'd like to comment-
Member Harris.
Yeah. So speaking of the dress rehearsal of Beauty and the Beast, it really was magical. The takeaway for me was there was an Iraqi family, refugee family, and the two young daughters, they were, I believe, six and nine, sat absolutely spellbound and aghast at the spectacle they were seeing. It was certainly a first in their world and they were enchanted. There's no other way to say it. So it was quite gratifying and really proud of our city for being so welcoming to people who really need refuge.
I was going to talk about that family because I was sitting behind them and the mother, she has two twin babies at home. They were triplets, but in fleeing Iraq, lost one of them. The girls were probably six and seven who were there. And her husband, they came here because she's Jewish and he's Muslim and they're being threatened by ISIS and so they were removed from the country as UN refugees. He's a former professional basketball player, but the girls, like Jeff said, were just like in awe. But the mother in particular, there's this one scene where all the cast is out and the dancing plates and you know, you remember that scene from Beauty and the Beast in the movie. She just was over the moon about it and I've never seen a moment of theater where an audience member was so touched and overwhelmed with a moment like that. The crowd was wonderful, but that particular reaction that she had, knowing the journey that they had, I think was just phenomenal. So the power of art is really transformational.
Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I wanted to also just mention and acknowledge a couple of wonderful young men that's doing something very, very incredible. One happened this past weekend with a young man who I've known since he was really a child. He played in the US Open, which is a major international golf event. He's a Sacramento kid, his father's a friend of mine, and he actually was on the leaderboard after the first two days. And he's an amateur, he was playing with the professionals and he actually finished 32nd, I believe, out of 150 professional golfers. His name is Cameron Champ. He'll be a senior at Texas A&amp;M next year. He's an All-American golfer, All-SEC first team, and will probably be turning pro sometime next year. But a wonderful young man, wonderful family, wonderful story. There's a lot of stuff on the internet about him. He was the longest driver in the field out of everybody and so had all the professionals, so keep an eye out for him. And then also I was called today by a group and a promoter and a team from Sacramento. There's a young man from Sacramento that's fighting for, I think, the bantamweight championship tonight in Las Vegas. And so what he, they asked is that, assuming that he wins the fight, that they wanted, he wanted to come in front of the council, you know, with his belt. And so I assured him that if he did win, and he said, when he wins, he wants to come, but I said, if you win, we're happy to bring you before the council and acknowledge you and maybe there are some other things we can do. But this is a young man right out of high school. I think he's 19 years old. And so hopefully tonight he'll win and then we can bring him within the next week or two before the council as well as Cameron when he's back in town.
That's great.
Very good.
That's great. Okay, Councilmember Hanson, you'll close out our meeting?
Wait one minute. Here, I've got some.
Okay.
Karen, Council-
Sorry, last bit, but you know, this council's done a lot in the fact that we've been discussing the issue of refugees and our recent actions on both the Fuel Act and working to support those services, because the Fuel Act and the Fuel Network that we put together also supports refugees. But today is National Refugee Day. The state is also doing a resolution on recognizing this as Refugee Day. And so with that, I also wanted to bring that highlight issue that our city has been committed to ensuring that we are a welcoming city since our resolution in 1985.
Fantastic. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, now to close out our meeting for today and thank all of you for being here with us, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'd just like to adjourn in memory tonight of a woman named Frances Grace Child. Frances Grace Child was a remarkable person, living with disabilities, in a wheelchair herself. She had been the executive director of the Resources for Independent Living Organization since 1981. She was president of Health Access for five years, which is a, she's president of the board advocating for universal healthcare and a variety of other things. But I had the pleasure of serving with her on the Paratransit Board where she was our vice chair and she had served on that board since 2008 and suddenly passed away at the age of 71 just a couple weeks ago. And so she's just a remarkable person, advocate for people who really needed the support that she brought, but also the longevity and leadership she provided really is remarkable. Sounds like Ms. Ashby wants to add-
I just wanted to say one thing to you about that. One really interesting thing about Frances Grace Child, completely paralyzed, right? And I went to high school with her daughter Monica Grace Child. And I went to SAC High, which some of you know. I didn't live in that area, but I went to SAC High because it had a visual and performing arts school there and I danced, like jazz tap ballet, that kind of thing. By far, and I was in the touring company, but by far in the time that I was there, the best dancer ever was Monica Grace Child. And her mom would come in a wheelchair and sit in the front row of every performance and watch Monica. She was incredible. So I always think of Monica Grace Child and how she was born so gifted in dance to this mom who was paralyzed and never knew what that felt like, but was an incredible family.
She was a tremendous citizen of Sacramento and I request the council adjourned in her honor and memory.
Adjourned in her honor.